Hello, welcome back this evening for the recessed public hearing. The first part of it was April 18th, about a month ago, and we've had a number of work sessions since then, so what we'll do is call this meeting to order and get a roll call, and we will then go back into the recessed public hearing.
Mayor Marchand?
Here.
Assistant Mayor Frini?
Here.
Councilor Grasso?
Here.
Councilor Dwyer?
Here.
Councilor Reynolds?
Here.
Councilor Penelakis?
Yeah.
Councilor Whitehouse?
Yeah.
Councilor Smith?
Here.
Councilor Hine?
Here.
Very good. As I was saying, it began on April 18th, ended, we had a number of work sessions involving each of the departments. Tomorrow night, we'll be taking any feedback from all those previous meetings, as well as tonight's meeting, and having a televised work session, it'll be right here, where we will basically hash out the numbers, not unlike what we did last year. It'll be that format, it'll be freewheeling, and that will, in all likelihood, serve as the basis for the votes to finalize this that happened in the next week or so after that. So, with that said, we'll reopen, or this recessed public hearing, it was, it's for the FY08 budget, as you know, up to three times around.
Your honor, I might want to just recap a couple things, if you'd mind.
Of course, go for it, yes.
Okay. Just as the mayor has indicated, that the, this is a reconvening of the public hearing of April 18th. Since that time, the city councils conducted work sessions with various departments, they conducted the work session on May 1st with the police and fire departments, May 3rd, they had their work session, the city council had a work session with the school department. On May 9th, the city council had their work session with the municipal departments, departments including public works, library, recreation, and other departments under the auspices of the municipal budget. Tonight's city council public hearing does reopen, the hearing from the 18th. The purpose of this is to get comment on some of the discussion that took place with the city council at the work sessions, all the work sessions were televised, and I think it's important people understand that the original budget that has been proposed was a total of eighty million, four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and two dollars, or four point, excuse me, a five point, four percent increase over fiscal '07. As a result of some discussions, the city council asked me to bring back proposed adjustments to that budget, and I believe that the finance department has copies of what we gave the city council, and I don't know if those have been handed out, have they, Judy? Why don't we hand those out now? And as the finance department is handing that out, the first page on the handout is just a summary of the general fund budget on the proposed FY08 tax rate, and that gives the full summary of the budget, and under that tax rate, as I indicated, the rate would be sixteen dollars and fifty cents, or seventy-eight cent increase, four point nine seven percent over last year. Turning to the, what we term and title Option A, which I provided to the city council last Wednesday night, you can see that there is both the operating and non-operating expenditures, and on the operating expenditures under Option A, we found out from our insurance carrier, the local government center, that our health insurance was going to be less than we anticipated, so we will be able to take a hundred thousand dollars out of the operating budget, and you can see how that would affect each of the departments. We'll continue with our stabilization fund, but what this would mean is, instead of having an eleven point seven percent average annually, we'd have a ten point five percent annual average. Then going down to non-operating expenditures, the city council asked me to take a look at reduction in some capital outlay, and I've listed those reductions, and I've discussed them with various staff members that may or may not be affected by them, and we, as you can see, there's two hundred and seventy thousand dollars of reductions proposed there. And then the next area is the decrease in the county tax. The, when we started putting this budget together a few months ago, we were estimating what the county tax would be. County tax is determined based on the percentage of total that the city would have to pay as part of the entire county, and county tax percentages are determined by equalized value, so the city has paid between eight and a half and nine and a half percent from time to time on the budget of the county. This year, the budget, the county budget is about thirty-eight million dollars, and we are anticipating that we're going to pay about nine percent on that as a percentage of the entire county, so we felt comfortable that we could drop the county tax by a hundred thousand dollars. And then there was also recommendation to decrease contingency by a hundred thousand dollars, presently proposed in contingency is four hundred thousand dollars, and that would drop that down to three hundred thousand dollars. We have not had to go deeply into contingency in fiscal year '07, so we would be able to encumber some of that money to mitigate some of those issues if they came up next year, if unanticipated expenses. So what that would do is bring the tax rate down by about sixteen cents, the expenditures would be reduced by five hundred and seventy thousand dollars, so you would have a tax rate of sixteen dollars and thirty-four cents, which would be a sixty-two cent increase rather than seventy-eight cent increase, or about a three point nine percent over last year. And to go even further, we did an Option B, and the only difference between Option A and Option B is for, in the area of operating expenditures, you can see that there's an additional hundred thousand dollars taken out of operating, and it indicates in that to be determined, and so that would be something the city council could discuss tomorrow night and bring down further, depending on their discussion and outcome of the work session tomorrow evening. That would bring down the tax rate by about another two cents, to sixty cent increase, or three point eight percent over FY07. Just for the public's information, every penny reduction is about thirty-seven cents of reduction of expenditures, or increase in revenues, or three hundred and seventy thousand dollars, there's ten cents reduction, or being, a dollar is three point seven million. Your honor?
Great, thanks very much for that, and at this point, I was so excited to get going, I guess. For those unfamiliar with the public hearing format, obviously tailor your remarks to those that are germane to the budget. You can speak up to three times, in theory, we have three times around, there's not a strict time limit, but please, it is useful, I think, for those in the council, when we can, the easiest way for us to understand your point is when it is isolated, when it is your point, and that's your comment. So with that, we'll take anybody that will come up, either to speak on, for, against, or about components of this budget, we'll take a first time around.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilors, Bill St. Laurent, representing the Taxpayers Association. It's starting to look better, this looks good. We've met, and are pretty pleased at how strong the council is in working with this budget. We also want to commend the council, probably it's the hottest job, hottest working budget I've seen, you guys really spent a lot of time working on this budget, and I don't envy you that, it's a lot of work. The formula was good this year, the, and trying to get the rate down, been fantastic, could be better, but, of course, it always could be better. We were hoping for the three to four percent, that the, actually three percent, that the mayor has mentioned. We want to commend city manager, he's done a fantastic job, he's worked very hard at this. The only thing is, he's let, I, we believe, he's let the department, a lot of the departments off the hook. He's working to reduce the budget, and they didn't. I watched all of your, unfortunately couldn't make it, but watched all of your work sessions on the television, and alls we heard is what they're doing, how they're doing it, which is all wonderful, and they're doing a good job, but I heard very little about the budget, about what they could possibly do to trim it, or maybe that they need more, but we didn't hear any real, real talk on the budget. That's the way I saw it, anyway. The, I'm going to be short, and say, we hope you can cut this a little more, and it looks like with the help of Mr. Bohenko, you're going, you're going to, because he's done a good job. The only other thing I can do is, when I heard a lot of the things in the work session about how they needed, what they needed, a lot of things that we need to have this because of the safety, that the eminent safety of our workers, agreed. Fire department, firemen have to have as much safety equipment to keep them from harm, police department the same way, but at what expense? I have a family, I'll give you a little analogy, I have a family, I, we now take care of one of our granddaughters, and if I wanted to be the safest I could be with my granddaughter, I'd buy the safest car I could, I should buy, to take her in that car, Volvo, whatever. I can't afford a Volvo, I'd love to have one, and I'd love to have one for the safety of my granddaughter, but I can't afford it. So where do we draw the line? All the safety equipment, all the stuff that these departments want is all wonderful, but what expense, how much are you going to take from the taxpayer until there's no These budgets go up four, five, six percent every year, keep growing, and I would say probably Portsmouth has worked the hardest. When I see these other towns possibly thinking of laying off firemen, policemen, that's sad state of affairs, but they let it get that way, and that's what this council, I believe, or the councils, had tried not to do, to get that far with it, and we have to continue that. So, we would hope that you could take this budget down as much as possible, three percent possible, pie in the sky, not really, it can be done, but three percent, it shouldn't be all your responsibility, should be theirs too, because we're all working for the same thing, and they're handing you this, saying, this is what we want, no matter what, you do whatever you have to do, but we're staying where we are. So, and I know it's hard for them too, but they never came back with any trim, any trimming of their budgets, in all of the work sessions that I watched. So, good luck tomorrow night, and think of us when you're the taxpayer, along with the employees, when you're working out the end of this budget. Thank you very much, and good job done, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, we'll take other first-time speakers.
Mr. Mayor, honorable counsel, my name is Hugh Jenks, for the record, I live and work in Portsmouth. It's my privilege to serve on the Pierce Island Committee of the City of Portsmouth, of which I have been the chairman since 2001. Before I go any further, I would like to associate myself with the remarks of Mr. St. Laurent, I think this budget process has been exemplary this year. I rise tonight in support of the inclusion of funds in the fiscal year 2008 capital budget for the ongoing improvement of Pierce Island Park. Last year was the first year since the adoption of the Pierce Island Master Plan by the city council in 1999, that no funding was included in the capital budget for a Pierce Island project. It was a contentious year for the budget last year, and the Pierce Island Committee bowed to the will of the council to leave out Pierce Island spending without objection. As it turned out, at this time last year, construction was still underway on the project from the prior year, the resurfacing of the municipal boat launch, and the construction of a docking system to aid in the launch and hauling of watercraft. These improvements were very much needed, and were very well received by the boating community. Although no funds were appropriated in last year's capital budget, there was a small item included in the operating budget of the Recreation Department to fund a summer internship for a student from the Recreation Management Program at the University of New Hampshire. This position was designated the Pierce Island Park Ranger, and was the fruition of a suggestion made by city manager John Bohenko, three years earlier, at a multi-agency meeting about Pierce Island. The Park Ranger Internship, which is funded again this season, represents a collaborative effort of the Recreation Department, the Pierce Island Committee, and the RMP faculty at the university. Thus, with very little expenditure of taxpayer funds last year, significant progress was made in managing the resource that is Pierce Island. In addition, in recent months, the city council, at the suggestion of its Traffic and Safety Committee, enacted a twenty mile per hour speed limit for the island, and an expanded parking ordinance, both of which will be revenue generating if enforced. Likewise, the Recreation Board and the Pierce Island Committee have recently voted to recommend the first increase in boat launch fees since their inception seven years ago. These fees, from which Portsmouth residents are exempt, will also be additive to city revenues if collected consistently. Finally, in December, the Pierce Island Committee voted to recommend that Pierce Island Park become a carry-in, carry-out facility. Removal of trash receptacles from the island will hopefully help remove the stigma of being a convenient dump site that the island has endured, and at the same time, eliminate the expense of every other day rubbish pickup by the Public Works Department. Unfortunately, Mr. Mayor, during the last twelve months, the increasing popularity of Pierce Island has led to several clashes between competing uses of the public lands. This council, and several public hearings, have heard input about misunderstandings arising from a lack of clarity about the regulations governing park use. In response to an incident last May, the Pierce Island Ranger, in conjunction with the city planning department, published a color three-fold brochure describing the island's history, its amenities, and its regulations for distribution to park visitors. Last fall, after another dispute, the Friends of the South End Neighborhood Association donated fourteen hundred dollars from the proceeds of their successful ferry house tour to the city to help underwrite the cost of a definitive publication on park regulations. At both of the subsequent public hearings on dog privileges on Pierce Island, there was a consensus that improved, although not necessarily more signage, with explicit park rules would be desirable. It was for that reason that at its January meeting, the Pierce Island Committee voted to recommend that any funds appropriated in the CIP for master plan improvements this year be earmarked for improved signage. Mr. Mayor, I recognize that times are tough, and that taxes are a constant issue, however, in my humble opinion, Pierce Island is one of the success stories in Portsmouth over the last ten years. People who once avoided it because of its unsavory reputation in the past, now flock to it. It is one of the best examples in the city of a public-private partnership, with organizations such as the Blue Ocean Society and the Friends of the South End contributing to its stewardship. In order to avoid becoming a victim of its own success, Mr. Mayor, the Pierce Island Committee recommends a robust city presence on the island, particularly during the peak tourist season. Signage is a low-cost way of establishing and reinforcing the city's jurisdiction over its public spaces. Even if it's a token amount, we recommend the expenditure of funds this year to establish visible, understandable signage and other media to educate visitors about the regulations governing the twenty-six acres of Pierce Island Park. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions from the staff or the council. Good evening.
Great, thank you very much. We'll take other speakers in this first time around on the budget.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff. This really appears to be a non-event. Looking around the room, it surely looks like a non-event. The parking lot is quite empty, and it's, and also this appears in the publicity that we're seeing that the lack of it appears to be a non-event. We don't, I don't think we're being given enough news of what's really going on, and but I happen, when I see what's been, this sheet, it appears that a lot has been going on, so, and a lot more than really that we're being informed about. But I do want to say that this is, this is good, and it's good to see that the figures and the balances are coming out of the five, they've left the 5 percent range, I think you're out of that, you're down in the 4 percent range, and maybe we can, between tonight, tomorrow night, you might be able to crack the 4 percent range, get down there around that 375, 380, or somewheres in that neighborhood. And I want to congratulate the people of doing this, so I know that the city manager gets a lot of the credit, because he bears the brunt of it, but I see all the councilors have been in there working, and this is really worthwhile. One kind of question, thing I've been thinking about a lot during the week was, I noticed that the mayor started out with his original proposals of in the 3.5 to 375 percent range, someplace in there, I think if, I don't have it exact, but, and I've been wondering, I said, now if the council doesn't really get in there and try to make this happen, I don't know where, what's happening in the, in the meetings, or the follow-through, or something's lacking, that, is he not getting his, maybe, I think, he's doing due diligence, and I know he's attended all the meetings that everybody else has, and I know he's doing his homework, and the pencils are, so, let's just not break the pencil sharpener for the next couple of days, and see if we can all get there with the city manager's original proposal, and crack that 4 percent level, and get it down there. That's about what I have to say, I want to thank you all for the work you've been doing. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anybody else, first time around? We'll go to the second time around, for anybody that would have any comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd just like to get particularly noted that we haven't had any meetings that have not been publicized over the TV. The gentleman alluded to the fact that a lot of work had been done, everything has been done right in front of that television camera right there.
That, and that's, that's accurate, that's, that's correct, so, and tomorrow night, we'll have a full discussion, and really the last couple of weeks have largely been gathering information and listening as much as anything, so, anyway, start with that, there you go.
City managers, city mayor, councilors, Attorney Sullivan and Kelly Brownaby, I want to thank you. I think the word wow fits it best as you finally hand out the last piece of paper towards the final of the budget for the '08 season. It's great work. It's almost hard to believe, with the increase of floor space of a new library, with the increase of a new high school that's only been online for the last two years, meaning that there's a high increase of the amount of square footage that has been added to the inventory of the Portsmouth, the city of Portsmouth, that alone, without increasing gas prices and fuel prices, the fuel prices alone this last month have doubled in certain sectors, and will continue for square footage, heating and cooling. With gas prices just today hitting an all-time high, we have to keep that in mind, and you've done an outstanding job. All departments have discussed long before they got to you what they could have had, what they would have wanted. Alone, I will speak just briefly on the school budget, it began at 6.4, and by the time it was done tonight with the city managers adding of this, it came down to a 5.71, and again, that should be wowed, that's the only word that I can come up with. Lastly, with all these things that have increased recently, today, the stamp increased by two cents. Half of that two cents, one penny for every stamp that just got increased, goes to retirement of retired postal workers, due to the fact that there are more postal workers retired now than there are postal workers that have worked in the past, or presently, I mean. Also, for that of armed forces, there are more retired armed force individuals than there are in the armed forces today, which has increased the taxes. We know retirement is one of the hardest things that you have to deal with, and the state, along with city and municipalities and towns, are working on that, and we're seeing this in conquered by our legislators and our state senators. Seeing this tonight, I am very proud to see that this city has come together to try to keep the tax low, but keep services up. I do, though, caution, all departments could have asked for other things that somewhere down the road, we're going to have to ask for as individual departments. There are things that have to be done, and those prices continue to go on up. It is a great job, I thank you as the council, and look forward to meeting with you in the next few days. Have a great night.
Thank you very much. Anybody else for a second time around here? All right, seeing none, we'll move to the third time around, third and final time, anybody speaking on the budget?
Good evening again, Martin Cameron. Sounds like I didn't get my, the message I was sending out didn't come out right. I didn't mean, I know the coverage on the Channel 22 and so forth, the city channel was fine, I was, what I wanted to get across was, especially the press coverage from the Portsmouth Herald, I, to me, it's been lacking, and that's the message I was trying to get out, not the, the work on the, on the appearance of the council in the work session. Thank you.
All right, thank you. No offense meant, no offense taken, except for, I think, Adam Widge of the Portsmouth Anybody else, third and final time around on this? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and the time is at 6:30 tomorrow night, it will be televised, it will be here, and we will be here then. Thanks.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, 6:30, make sure I get the time right.
6:30.
6:30.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Sorry, have a great night.